But he said three minutes, so we will get started. And we can always jump back if he needs to jump back and ask any questions. So we're going to start off by reviewing the agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that council had questions or concerns about? Anything on the public hearings? All right, how about the resolutions? Let's see.
Is that him? No. Oh, that could be.
Anything on the resolutions?
There he is.
I thought Alan was going to ask some questions, so I was waiting. Do you have anything on the resolutions? No? No, I don't either.
You're fine. We just started, but nobody has any questions, so. Do you have any things on the resolutions, public hearings, or consent agenda?
I think so.
Dan, did you want to talk about the bonds? Just while Roger's looking through.
I would love to. I'm here today, and John Bermanster from PFM is here today also to help me out with this one a little bit. We've been through a couple of sets of resolutions now preparing for this bond issue. There are two issues that we're looking at. 16A, which is $6,95,000 of general obligation bonds that are not taxable, and another $2, 830,000 which are taxable, meaning that the interest that the investors receive on this is taxable on both their federal and state returns. So there's a little bit of difference in the nature of how these are handled. On the 24th of October, we indicated that we were willing to sell the bonds after we had called the resolutions. One of the first things I want us to take a look at is in that packet that I passed out with the paper clip on it. There are three pieces to that. And the first piece of that is the Packet A1, which shows you what the bid results were from this morning's bidding. These were competitively bid. There were seven groups, some of them singular, some of them were consortiums of different investment firms that got together. One of them had, what, 28 or 29 different?
25 at least.
25 at least different investment firms that came together to mitigate their risk on these. Others were just single groups that wanted to bid. What we're showing there is that the total interest cost for the 2016A bonds, the lowest bid, the lowest proposal, was 1.7543 percent interest, which is pretty good. The second page then shows you how those different bids that are shown on the first page with their total interest costs work out in terms of dollars, whether there are premiums on the bonds. And then in the darkened box at the bottom, it'll line those up as to what the net interest cost is and what the total interest percentage rate is. So coming out with, first of all, with a 1.75 was very good. Coming with a fairly narrow spread between the bidders from 1.75 to 2.24 was also a pretty good indicator that people were locked in on these. The third page then shows the actual offering, the initial offering that the winning bidder will make. And they'll make those first four years at a 2 percent coupon and the last five years at two and a half, which means they will actually yield 0.85, 1 percent, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4, and 1.5 for those different amounts on those different dates. So they'll show you that there's a difference between the years in the investments and the dollar price for all of them is above 100. So if it's above 100, they're not going to actually get the full coupon value. They will get the yield value because they're buying at a premium. The second one is Packet B1 that shows the results for the B. Interestingly, it's the exact same bidders, just in a different order. UMB Bank was the lowest on the 16A. Piper Jaffray and Company was the lowest on the 16B, and they are proposing a 1.654 interest cost. Now, when you go to the second page, again, you'll see the totals, top to bottom, a spread of 165 to 2.3. So the spread is a little larger on this one from the low to the high. On the third page, what it shows you is that they will offer the, they will offer at 100, right at 100, which means that they'll get a yield of, with a coupon of 1.1, 1.4, 1.7. Those are the interest rates they'll get. Now, the interesting thing is that the TIC on the taxable is actually lower than what it is on the non-taxable. We thought it was going to be the other way around. What happens is that the B bonds are actually amortized over a four-year period. It's a very short period. And so to give that opportunity on a 2.8 million issue, to get it all back in just four years, makes it a much more attractive bond. And the other part of it is that if you look at that third page on what the coupons actually are, the coupon return on those is larger. There we go. Yeah, so you're getting a yield of 1.1, 1.4, 1.7, and 1.9 compared to the 1.1s, 1.2s that you're getting on the As. So you're getting a little bit higher yield as well. Finally, on the Moody's report, which is that blue stripe on top. We have currently, Moody's Investors Service rating our bonds. There are two primary rating firms, that would be Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's. There's also a company called Fitch out of Chicago that does some rating. What you'll see in the headline there is that the new issue, Moody's assigns AA2 to Council of Love's Geo Bond Series. We have held our bond rating from the last rating, and that's good. Things haven't gone a whole lot up, things haven't gone a whole lot down. But there are some things in that first page that I want to point out. The credit strengths. There's a sizable taxable tax base that benefits not only from being big for our size, but from being in the Omaha metropolitan area. There are satisfactory cash and reserve funds. And this is kind of a hallmark of Moody's ratings, is if you have sufficient cash to meet their scales, then you have sufficient cash to make your payments, and you're going to be okay. But it has to be at the point of the rating. They don't look at a lot of planning that you do. Credit challenges. We have a moderate tax base concentration. And what that means is that 20 percent of our tax base is in the largest 10 taxpayers in the community. So 10 properties make up 20 percent of our tax base. And that's what they call a little bit of a concentration. If anything happens to one of those, it's going to have a little more significant impact than other cities that have a more diverse tax base. Our challenges are that the tax base concentration is there. It calls us lower socioeconomic indices relative to similar rated entities. So we have a good rating, but socioeconomically, whatever that might mean, we have some challenges to overcome. It could be demographically. Ratings outlook, because we don't have a local government with a huge amount of debt, they don't do a ratings outlook on us. Factors that could lead to an upgrade. Again, sustained growth in reserves. They'd like to see us have more money. If we had more money, we'd get a better rating. They'd like to see a moderation of debt burden. Well, who wouldn't? I think that's important for us. But I also think, and I've said this before, I think planning for that debt burden, and the planning that we do into the future can be demonstrated to get better control on that debt burden and not have us kind of falling down, going up, saying, "We don't have capacity this year." Well, we have capacity this year. We don't this year. We can smooth that out, and I think we can make the rating look even better. Any weakening or deterioration of the tax base could lead to a downgrade. So as we're going into future bond issues, most especially the $20 million for the police station, we'll want to keep a good eye on that. Keep a good eye on what's staying in the tax base, what's coming out of TIF districts, what's improving and encouraging improvement, not just new construction, not just new builds, but improvements in what's already there in the tax base, because that can start to bring your tax base up as well. Otherwise, I think the report was quite good. I felt good about the liquidity comment, that we're at 25 percent of operating revenues in our liquidity. That's strong. Operating reserves, again, are said to be good and strong for us. One of the things that I want to say about that debt limit calculation is that I want to have some more talks with PFM and with possibly even S&amp;P, Standard &amp; Poor, because right now we have debt capacity of 232.9 million, which is a lot. Our debt outstanding on that is just over 60 million. So we have a 33 percent usage of the debt capacity, leaving 77 percent free for bonding. So we have basically two-thirds to three-quarters of our capacity available to us. But there is some concern there. Part of that is I think the markets know that we're going to go for 20 million for the police station, and they're wondering how far up or down that's going to go. We've reassured them, we said 20 million. The voters said 20 million. That's where we're going to be. So we do have some more study to go on this. We have a couple of large projects involving possible certification of the levy as complete and strong and hoping to bring down insurance rates. But if we issue that amount of debt, we may, again, push farther into our debt limitation and cause some scrutiny on what we do there. So we do have some things to talk about. We do have some research to do. But given the rating that we have, given what we've gone over in needs for the city to this point, I would suggest that this bid came out pretty good, and that I would recommend the city favorably consider awarding the bid to the two lowest bidders.
And this Moody's report initially came out maybe in August, and we mentioned the recently passed bond issue. They didn't have that information, so they gathered it all up and took it back and reanalyzed it and didn't change our bond rating any. So they're aware of the police station and the fact that we will be issuing approximately 20 million in debt, hopefully less.
And we're still looking good. John, do you have anything you want to add?
Thank you, Dan. John Bermanster with PFM. The only thing I'd like to add from what Dan mentioned, he took a lot of thunder away from me, but I think the competitive bid process this morning really served the city really well. If you do look at the bid tabulations, you can see the differences in the interest rates, the low being a 175 on the Series A and the high being a 224. That's pretty wide. It's $211,000 to the city. They're in price discovery right now, because as you guys know, rates are going up, so everyone's trying to figure out where the market is. So I think this competitive process, the fact that you've got seven bids with seven different answers of where the interest rates are, and you were able to pick the lowest one here on both sides, is going to save the city money in the long run. So that's all I'd like to add on Dan's. So really good results, and I think the competitive sell really benefited the city to discover that price discovery with seven different opinions on where interest rates are, because it's moving every day now since the election. So, thank you.
But any questions? All right. Any questions on the agenda?
Don, how many other non-buildable lots we have that are buildable lots that are 24 months on the mark? You know what I mean, that we have been marketing for 24 months?
Well, that's a fair assessment that...
I would be guessing to tell you that.
Well, maybe in marketing.
Yeah, but had.
Yeah, had them on, I mean, had them for sale. Because, I mean, these ones...
I'd guess we've just been marketing stuff in the last year, but...
15 maybe? But I will look at the list and tell you how many non-buildable parcels we have and how many buildable parcels, and I'll break the buildable ones down.
Buildable that are past 24 months, I guess.
Yeah.
Because that's what this was.
Yeah. It seems to me that the 657A numbers seem to have dropped.
They've done a pretty good job of getting rid of...
The last year, year and a half, but, you know, that's just my...
Numbers coming in.
I've seen as many coming in. That's definitely for sure.
But I'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, I was just wondering how many more we have that are over 24 months? And then, we're setting a public hearing for both on 16282 and 16289. Am I correct? I've never seen two resolutions like that together.
I think it's because that meeting manager thing is being weird.
The public hearing is just for, the first one, the development agreement.
Okay.
We should go separately. I need one.
I was going to say, because they're listed together. Just, I've never seen it that way. That's one question, I guess. I know it's a new program, but...
Well, that was done on purpose because they're kind of the same project, but yet they're separate actions. So you vote separately.
Okay.
Other questions?
I always just try to figure out why we're at 18 years on TIF money. I know I have that question a lot of times, but I just don't. Have we had a development recently that hasn't had TIF money? I mean, are we going to ever have one again? Because, I mean, it just seems like, I mean, 18, 20's the max, right? 18's real damn close to that. I just...
Well, 20 is not your max.
I thought, I was told that the state...
On an economic development project, you are limited to 20 years. And technically, when you go through the numbers and the lag in property taxes, an economic development project would be 18 and a half years. But in an oblided area, you really have no term.
Right. So 20 is for the economic development, is what I guess...
For example, could you do that on West Broadway? Because it predated the 20-year maximum, and so it is indefinite.
That is a slum and blight area.
Yeah.
So you could do it on Broadway. If we wanted to issue a bond for 20 years, sorry, Dan, to pay for that, you could do that.
Okay, and...
So, I mean, if you have questions, get those to me. You know, you want to have an explanation of the rationale for the length.
Yeah. And 15, I mean, 18 years is just...
Understand.
A long time. I mean, has it ever been part of the discussion to come to us and say, "What would you guys like?" And, you know, maybe?
That's what we're doing.
This is it? I mean, before, I mean, before it comes, before the Wednesday packet comes out? I mean, like, I know, a lot of us don't have time to discuss it before that, but it just seems like, I mean, did you ask for 15 years?
Understand tonight, what you are asked, being asked to do is two things. One, set a public hearing on this development, which gives us 30 days to have this dialogue, if you wish. And I mean it. If you have, you know, specific questions, you know, certainly email me, get them to Matt, get them to us. We'll try to answer those. The second is, because we are disposing property in an urban renewal area, we have to go through a competitive process. So we have to do this 30-day notice.
All right. I would tell you that we sat, and I'm doing a little bit of this from memory, so I want you to understand that. But we sat down, and he wanted 85 percent for 15 years, is my recollection. And we said, "No, we can't do that. That doesn't give us any tax benefit." And so he had a dollar figure in mind, and so we got to that dollar figure by doing 18 years, 75.
Well, I would say that there's probably three reasons, and I will try to put some numbers to them for you. One, even though the rollback on multifamily is going down, it's still not down to where it's at. I think there's also a fear being expressed. As the rollback comes down, you're paying less in property taxes, therefore you have more income, therefore does the assessor on an income approach increase your assessed valuation, which loses some of that, some of that decrease in the, caused by the rollback. So I think there is a little bit of concern with that. And the other issue is, what's being paid for the ground is a tad above appraised value, that is to help go towards the infrastructure. So I will get you those numbers also. The other is, is you have not seen this type of construction in Council of Love's on multifamily. To put in, tuck under garages, pedestal building, having commercial mixed use with it, comes with an inherent risk and higher cost. I will get you what the costs are for a typical suburban-style apartment like would be at River Park versus this.
When you're putting those numbers together, could you just figure, based on the agreed-upon minimum assessed value, less the TIF, how much money then goes into, over those 18 years, the city's coffers that wouldn't be there if we don't get that developed?
We can do that.
So I can kind of, in my mind, yeah, yeah.
That would help.
We'll try to do that.
That would help, and then...
Oh, sorry.
I mean, you know, it'll go to the debt service levies and schoolhouse levies.
It's more than 15 percent.
It's about 20.
25, but it's...
20 and 25?
Yeah, well, they scrape off the debt service.
I think it's about 20 percent.
Comes off the top, and then 25 percent of the remainder comes to the city also.
That would just be helpful to, you know, be able to see, hey, you know, if we do this, then we can see our money going into our coffers that will help us, you know, continue on down there and get the things done we're trying to do in Council of Love, so.
Well, and the other thing I will say to you, the last project that hasn't been a tax credit project or a CBG project for affordable housing, for market rate housing, goes back... Well, when did River Park 1 happen, the last phase of River Park? Eight years ago?
Probably.
Maybe 10? So, that should be a concern.
Well, and the other things you won't see in that figure are the road use tax money that will increase because our population should grow because of the number of units.
I think it's about $100 per capita.
And the 20 percent we scrape for the debt levy is pretty important in servicing our debt, so.
Right. For me, it'd be important to see that, like you said, he wanted 15 at 85. So it doesn't look, I mean, not that, it doesn't look like we're just giving away the house every time. You know what I mean? Like, what did he start with? What do we end up with? I know that you probably can't do that on all of them, but for me, that helps me, I guess, is all I'm saying.
It's kind of interesting. I get where you're coming from. It's been a long-term question that the councils have had, and the consultant they've got for this 712 initiative branded himself as the nation's expert on TIF. And so when we're down there, I said, you know, we always struggle with, what's an appropriate TIF level? He said, "Well, it's pretty easy. You just figure the gap in financing." I said, "Well, you know, I'm a commercial banker." And I said, "I can figure the gap in the financing." But let me throw you this wrinkle in there. We have 180 percent higher commercial property taxes in Council of Love versus what they have in Omaha, and how do you quantify that? And this guy just hung his head down, didn't say another word. So it's not as easy as, in a normal community, you'd say, "This is what the end property's going to appraise out at, and this is what it's going to cost to build, which is more than what it's going to appraise for." And so they, in order to get a bank financing, they got to fill that gap with TIF money, and it's pretty easy. But when you're looking at 180 percent higher property taxes into perpetuity, it really makes it a difficult equation to analyze.
You know, and I think the developers worry that, you know, let's say the assessment, assessed valuation for, you know, a unit is, you know, $65,000 across the street under the current system, you know, and you put these new rollback numbers in, they worry about that crawling up, you know, to 80, 85. Although it's, you're going to get a rollback that increase 8 into that benefit that they're going to receive. So, but we'll work on that.
Yep. Just need to wrap my mind around it a little better.
Oh, yeah. You can't spend 18 years. I can't quite...
Yeah, I'm not saying it's going to happen.
It's a tough science to figure out, because, like I say, when the accountant sits down and says, "Yeah, we can compare apples to apples, but the commercial property tax rate are pears and oranges," you know, it's just...
And when you're dealing something, for me, when you're dealing with something like Walmart, that was easier to play hardball with, because Walmart's going to go in a community, and, you know, we were dealing with a gap on that property because the property is in such bad shape. So there's a lot of upfront costs to get it shovel-ready. But they were asking for excessive amounts, and to me, it's like, well, you know, Walmart's a Walmart. But when we're dealing, like, with the riverfront, you're talking about trying to bring businesses here that could locate anywhere. And it makes it a lot harder to figure out, well, then, you know, are they going to choose the lower taxes on the other side of the river? Are they going to choose our side? Walmart's going to choose where they're going to choose because they need to be in retail. Now, I'm only making that example, because that was one where we really did go back and forth a lot on there.
And I think Don's point was good, too. It's the fact that we don't want, not that any of those other apartments are bad, they're very nice apartments, but what we wanted here was something a little nicer than what we currently have. So to get that, there is more of a gap, because it is more expensive to build, and it's a little bit of a risk right now, just because we don't have it here. We're assuming that it's going to go over well. I'm sure it will. But that's playing in, I think, to the factor right now, is we're asking for this instead of just your standard, build a quick apartment that we already have here.
Everything else, I will get to you, like I get with Dana, in my view, Council of Love's uses TIF versus our apartments. And I think you'll be pleasantly surprised.
And the other thing to point out, too, on that, is that if those apartments are successful and they're in that higher rent range, and we're bringing people in, it's going to start changing the look for anybody looking to invest, right? Right now, they look, they say, "Ah, there's no rooftops, median income's this, we're just not going to do it. We have this formula we use when we make a decision, and this doesn't fit." But if we can get these apartments in, they are successful, and they are higher rents, and we're adding more rooftops, it's going to make that West Broadway corridor blossom a little bit more, because now they're going to say, "We have the people living there, we have the higher incomes in that area." But we have to work on that, because otherwise, we're not going to see that.
Other questions? Any part of the agenda? All right. Oh, shit.
Go ahead. Does anyone have a question on? We got a letter today, and I don't know, like, to have this be part, because I think that it should be part of the public record is kind of what the goal was. What do we need to do? Do we receive and file? Do we talk about, like, what's...
There's a letter.
Marcy, do you know, or Dick, what we need to do?
This is the same topic, this letter that we had, we had two actually earlier.
I see, yeah, that was going to be my next question, was the next one, too.
And I'd asked for input from the council as to how to respond to the most recent one. And I really didn't get much back from the council. And I really didn't get much back from the council. I sent out a proposed letter, I think Sharon responded, that she didn't want to state certain things in it, but that's, that's all we have.
Which one? Oh, I think we're talking about two different ones.
I think we're talking about different ones, too.
That's okay, we're talking about two, okay, we can talk about that one first.
I don't know if Dick got that.
Yeah.
That one for Peczek.
The Peczek one, I do think we need to send something back probably at this point.
Let me pull that last letter I, I put together.
Okay.
They sent a letter out to everybody to ask them to look it over and see.
Right.
To respond to this, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And let me pull that out, I should probably get you your copy of that tonight.
Okay.
What's he asking?
It's, so the first one is the one that's from um the Hughes property.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
The other one is from Michelle. And or we got an email from her, a letter from her, and then we'd also received one from finance employee earlier, like, what, a week or two ago? So I don't know, like, what, normally we don't deal with these sorts of employment type issues, but we've had two in the last couple of weeks, so I guess, I'm not sure what we should be.
I don't think it's any of your responsibility, is it?
Well, but when they send them to us, I just don't know what, because like this was via certified mail, I don't know. I guess we're trying to figure out like.
Well, the one issue, the one issue is, but I don't know that Michelle Bandur is.
This didn't ask for, this was informational only to us and said at the end that they were not looking for a council hearing or anything. So since there's no action requested, I don't know, Dick, do we receive? I mean, they were sent to us personally, not as, how do we do that?
I've, I've not seen the documents, so I.
It came to City Hall.
Yeah.
Through City Council.
Wasn't asked to be made part of the record, wasn't asked for any action, so I would have just assumed they were just personal.
Yeah, it seems, in those conditions, I would say it's.
On that, I disagree because it's, it's addressed to us in our, with our titles.
Mine says council member.
Mine says councilman.
But I just mean that it was more of a, this is where I'm coming from, this is how it was. But since there was no request for any action on it, I don't know. I mean, I don't mind receiving and filing it, but there was no request to be made part of the record. It just clearly said, I wanted an opportunity to share with you my views on them.
Is this in relation to the pressure or?
No, this is another one. This is in relation to Michelle.
We, we do have, you know, I appreciate we don't have direct oversight over these positions, though we do have the duty of oversight, generally speaking, with regard to the budget and any concerns. And, you know, whether I agree with her or not, she certainly has the right to make what she believes her concerns to be known. And I, I do think to that extent, it is something that if we as a council wanted to discuss and exercise oversight on the issues, generally speaking, we'd have every duty to do so. But it'd be up to us whether we would do such. But, but I do think it was sent to us officially, so I do think at the very least it ought to be put in the public record because it was sent to us in our public capacity.
Was the intent for it to be public is my question.
At one point, I think it was, but I don't know, we just got to say, so I didn't get a read through it, I mean, I read skim through it quickly.
I read it quickly, it's.
I got, I got Marcy's email, yeah.
I, I, I believe it was simply because it was sent certified mail and to our titles and not to us personally at our homes.
Is this something we should read or?
I think at the very least it ought to be put into the record. Whether we read it is, is your prerogative. I, I mean, I don't think we're obligated to do it, but you have every right, in my view.
And I guess, so that's my question, I guess maybe more for Dick than anything from legal. Since we, I mean, like I said, normally up until now, we've not had issues that have come to us or that someone has come to us about as a council. Now, we've had two people that have come to us saying, you know, there's concerns.
Thank you for reading.
What, I mean, I guess, I don't know, what role do we have or should we be doing anything, like what legally?
I agree, I.
That might not be.
I guess it'd be tough to send it to us.
I'd like to really dissect the letter and see what it's asking of you. And then I'd get back to you via email or something earlier this week and actually respond with these questions because some of the texts I'm hearing here, it doesn't sound like she's really requesting much, any action. She's pretty much almost trying to use it as a name hearing document. And.
A what, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Name hearing.
Oh, excuse me.
And the, the state, though, does provide for name hearing hearings for the council. If somebody feels that they're improperly terminated, they can get it, have the opportunity to step forward.
And she says, though, on the last page, she's not asking for that. So my big thing is, I just don't want to make it public record if that was not her intent in sending it because she just says that the letter is her opportunity to tell her story in this letter.
And we can ask her, I mean, maybe that's what we do, just ask her, and if that's her intent, then we go ahead and make it public record. If it wasn't, then we don't, I mean, I suppose we should ask her.
I just don't want to.
Yeah, I was under that impression, too, since it came certified mail that that was why she did that, because otherwise I think you would have just sent it to us and called it out.
I, 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 I agree, we should ask her. I, I, I do, I would, and I struggled with that this afternoon. I, I just, I would find it hard to believe a sophisticated media person would send it to a certified male at City Hall using our titles and not expect it to be public.
No, but I would have thought, most of the time they'll say, they ask for it to be, I would like this to be made part of the record. Normally that, when we, when we get a letter and they want it part of the record, they say they want that part of the record. Um and I just don't want to do that without having talked to her and say, hey, was that your intent?
Fair enough, I'll agree to that. I'll agree to that, that's reasonable.
So somebody could text her.
There's the.
Oh, perfect.
I don't, ever.
But there's, I mean, if, I guess, this is her side, as, as it, the first three sentences says.
Dick, what, what's the council's oversight? This is her side? I don't, does the council have a role in employee um relations, if that's the right word?
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm trying to find out, too.
As far as, uh, could the council take some action that would cause her come, come back as an employee? No.
No.
If you've got somebody essentially doing a whistleblowing thing, which I don't really think this is, the council maybe has some.
In a way, it sounds like it is a little like.
It feels like it, but I appreciate you just received it, and I just received it a couple hours ago. But it, it appears to at least insinuate whistleblowing. And to that extent, whether, whether it has any merit or not, and I don't know, I think if we chose to discuss it in that vein, and maybe we ought to wait till we hear from her how specific we could get, and I think that'd be appropriate.
They will have a response here, no matter as to whether or not that was her intent was.
I, I think to the extent we exercise oversight in the general process and that the things we funded are being done appropriately, I think we have every right and obligation to discuss that because it'll inform us as we decide what to fund in next year's budget.
It was intended to be public record.
It was.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
So you can tonight make a motion to receive and file it, I suppose. As long as that's what she needs.
I do, I do think the, the fair thing to do, and I, because I don't think it's appropriate to sandbag people with, with asking them questions on a letter they have not seen. I do think appropriate that the, the copy of the letter then be given to the individuals listed in it as well as the mayor. And so that then we could talk at the next study session about any concerns we may have or not. I just address them and I'm not insinuating anything. I just think it ought to have a fair hearing as to concerns about.
Well, I would tell you, I'm the one who terminated her, so, you know, she can.
Well, I, I appreciate that, but then it'll come down to, you know, how we fund it. And then, including things of, and what I'd particularly like to talk about is how we move forward. Like, for example, I um I, I want to make certain that these positions are, are filled appropriately because, for example, say in the last week, I didn't realize I wasn't supposed to drink the water, for example.
Exactly.
I, I knew all about.
Somebody said that to me, I go, I wouldn't have had an email.
Until like last night. Uh, there's mixed.
But I was down there.
Or marketplace.
But I, I was down there and, and I'm not feeling well, frankly.
And I've heard of several people that said they were sick.
My voice is down enough, even you might wonder.
I got very nice emails saying, why didn't you let us know?
And so I, I say that just because as we fill these, fill these uh, these positions or, you know, things or like reminders about the Veterans Parade that we traditionally did and, and we, the Twitter accounts basically stopped. Just things that, you know, as we, we move forward, that we, we make certain that these roles are, that contingency plans are put in place so that, you know, when, when someone goes, whether it was the right decision or not, we have, there's a, a plan in place to keep the ship running. I, I think that's important. And so to that extent, since we authorize the funding of things, I think just having that discussion, it's not accusatory. It's just, you know, making certain that things are being done appropriately. And if they are, great. If they're not, then we'll all work to make them better. But I, I, I think it'd be appropriate then to, tonight's receive and file and not to expect people named in the letter to immediately respond. Number one, I don't think that's fair. And number two, I, I, I think it'd be better to have more of a reasoned response. And I don't think any of us, me included, would, would give a reasoned answer, probably more of an emotional one, me included, if we didn't have time to reflect.
Yeah, I like that. So I think we, we see and file it tonight, we'll get a copy to, like, you should get a copy to those in the letter and then maybe it's the next company.
So then, Dick, if um she wants it public, my assumption is that that we can be public in our assessment of her on these items that I'm reading that.
Yeah, because how do you respond if they're under the law that they can't?
I mean, there are lots of things in here that I would say are not accurate in any sense of the imagination. And, and so do I sit here and go one by one and say, in this case, when she said she did that, she never even bothered to show up?
Without having seen the entire document and all the allegations that it raises, I, I can't counsel on it.
Yeah.
We just.
Well, I think to that, honestly, to receive and file this tonight makes it part of the public record that until he has given us a ruling, you know, they've got, we've got to be able to allow them to respond them publicly, too. Because otherwise it's just super one-sided. Um until we know if they can legally do that because their employment records are confidential, if I understood that email correctly.
Can we, can we have a rule before tonight? Because I'd hate to have someone, whatever it says, even if I disagree with it completely, and like I say, I don't know. I don't know. That's, that's where our job to, to find out. But uh if she makes that allegation and she says she wants it public.
Right, but we have that on a text, we need to.
I, I appreciate that. And if we get that firmed up and, and we get confirmation that this is in fact waiving her rights, which she would have.
And that's what I want her to know because it's going to be talked about then at an open public meeting for the whole world to hear.
Yep.
Both sides of it. I don't, I need her to know that because I don't.
I think you're right.
I don't want it to be something that she never expected.
I think you're right. And then if, if that's the case, then I think it has to be received tonight. I appreciate people's responses wouldn't be received at the same time. But, you know, if, if, if it's a request made of us and that's really what she intends, I don't think we can sit on it. But I also think in fairness to, to folks, I don't think we should immediately, even though we'd have every power to do it, to ask questions right this second of folks about it. I, I don't think that's fair to them and I don't think it'll get us informed answers, so I think it'd be pointless and unfair.
Okay, but I'm, what I'm saying is if we receive and file it, and I'm fine with doing that because I want to do whatever the intention was.
Right.
Agreed, agreed.
If we receive and file it, now it is a public record. So whatever that response is going to be to that is going to be public, too. And that's, that's what I want to make sure, that I get something, an email from her saying, I understand by this be, by making this public, I'm waiving, you know, my right confidentiality of this because, you know, if.
I guarantee you Channel Three and Channel Six are going to be here wanting to know what the news reporter from Channel Seven's employment history with the city's been. And so I just.
She wants to do that, though. She, she has that right.
She has the right and I want her to do what, what she understands she's doing. I just don't want us, I don't want her to send a letter making sure that we understood where she was coming from to turn into a public outing of anything that the city can, her employers considered to be miss, you know, not being done right or whatever. I don't know if she expected that.
I don't know.
I'm sure we can find out for her, yeah.
The urgency to actually receive and file it, she did not make the deadline for it. There's nothing to say.
Well, I guess.
Wait that until the next meeting to have that happen.
Be just like somebody walking up and giving us something tonight, right? We'd have to receive and file it if she walked up and gave it to us.
Right.
Right, so I mean, I.
I, I think we, we, we've received it now. My, my concern is if we wait, um I, I don't think a person, if a person makes an allegation, and let's say, let's assume for this sake argument, it's completely wrong.
I don't know that there's any allegation made in there.
Uh, they're insinuations. They're, they're, they're not present.
Just have seen it, but I, the cover letter says.
There's, there's insinuations that the city government is not running efficiently and has place favorites. Now, I'm not saying that's true or not, but that's a powerful insinuation.
I don't know how you could play favorites with only one party, but.
Well, I appreciate, but that's the substance of the argument to the general argument. I mean, I mean, that appears, that's quite a, that's quite a powerful insinuation. And so if someone makes that insinuation, if she came to the mic tonight and said that, it'd be public record.
Right.
So I appreciate other people then could respond thereafter, but, but I just, I'm not comfortable saying that because we got it today, we can't, we're not going to receive and file it, assuming she confirms that she intends to make this.
Yeah, if she could just send an email before the meeting tonight saying that I understand, you know, that once I, you guys receive and file this, it's public record and so then.
So he can defend himself because he should be able to defend, he should defend himself, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, absolutely.
I don't know that I've gotten anything to defend myself on.
Well, but I mean, respond, that's what I mean. I'm sorry, I'm speaking illegal speak. I'm not insinuating that there's truth to it, I'm just saying you'd be able to respond.
But I do think that at the next meeting, this would, like Nate said, I would like to maybe have some sort of conversation about, because we did. I mean, unfortunately, we had social media, you know, people are starting to follow the page because there's a lot of info on there. And then all of a sudden, there's nothing, you know, it's radio silence.
I, I am, I am disappointed.
You know, someone else should have picked up that slack if this was the plan. In the meantime, you know, or even if you ask one of us, hey, could you do it for a couple, a week at a time or something? So I would like us to come up with, because we're trying to build this image campaign.
Yeah.
And the minute it stops, starts dropping off and people are like, oh, there's no reason to pay attention to it, it's just not.
Kind of like our discussion with when we transitioned the CVB. So that's not a criticism of anyone, we can all do better. I just think there, there appears not to have been a contingency plan, so I, I'd like to hear what we're doing to keep the Twitter account because right now it's dead and.
Facebook, yeah.
And so people didn't know about the Veterans Parade or I didn't know not to drink the water, um, you know.
That, I had people ask me, too, I said, well, we would, I'm sure we would have gotten an email.
And I'd like to think we would have gotten that out to the um TV stations. I would imagine they would have covered that and they don't always cover us, but I would have think not being able to drink the water.
It's not, it's Water Works, I don't think they're here.
I know, but, but it's still the city. In, in people's minds, it's the city. I, I mean, there is that quasi-independency of them, but I don't think that makes a difference to the average person.
No, I guess all we can was boil advisory, but nobody really knew about it.
Just down that margin.
Yeah, I didn't know either.
And some are saying only in certain areas, but then there's another one that said all of Council Bluffs. I don't know what's right or wrong. It was an actual.
There, there is, there is a screenshot of an actual notice.
Exactly, that said all.
And so if that's forged, somebody did a really good job with the appropriate letterhead with all the correct names on it.
Correct.
Yeah.
What's, huh?
The, the notice looked pretty official about the boiling.
Right, right, I saw it on Facebook, that's how I knew about it.
But, but I saw a screen, it wasn't just somebody wrote something.
Well, tip, it's, it's not unusual when we'd have a water main break.
Unless I was trying to see if he's here or he's not here.
Sure.
Greg, do you know anything about how widespread that water main break was?
Didn't they, did you guys get contacted, no?
Normally, they contact everybody, it's a fact, they do door hangers and that sort of thing is.
Do you think you could maybe talk to him, like, why didn't that happen this time?
Let me find it.
I mean, I, I had probably five people ask me about it and I said, I can't believe it's true because we would, they would have let us know.
Yeah, and I had several people contact you.
In which case, I look like an idiot.
Go to the Water Works page.
And when you look on the Water Works page, there's a little blip about it.
There's a blip on the page.
But then somebody else had another announcement that, yeah, like Nate said, looked very official, that said all of Councils. I don't know. But either way, it would be good if they would let us know, so you guys could throw something up on Facebook or have like a news, I mean.
Tim, who called you and told you?
Alert, or, I mean, there's.
Unless the Water Works page has been hacked.
It's probably not a good situation.
We found out, I, I didn't cover the story, I know we, we covered it.
I know, I saw it in the paper.
Yeah, I saw it on the, on your website today and that was the first notice I had.
Two days after the fact, yeah.
And I, and I have friends, and I have friends in that area and I drank the water and it could be coincidental, but I, I have not felt good.
We certainly need to make sure that the water company is notifying the city when that happens because if they don't tell us, we don't know either.
Well, I, I agree, but things like that, that's where, and again, it's improving our protocol. Well, perhaps not, but.
Unless the water company called her, that's what I'm saying, if.
Which, they, they may have had there been a person in that chair or a contingency plan that people knew you called this person next.
Why we're hiring somebody, I know it's posted, I saw it posted in the clerk's office.
Teresa's keeping the Facebook up to date. I don't know if we're doing Twitter or.
No.
We're not doing Twitter, but there wasn't much of anything on it. But Facebook has been continued every day, we have more followers now than we did three weeks ago.
There was no mention of the Veterans Parade, for example, and we've done that previous two years. And so that was a concern. And to be honest, I'll be very frank, I forgot the parade was that, I just forgot it. And it was embarrassing for, yeah, we used to. But it's a, the pride parade, excuse me, celebrate CB parade is not a city function and we promote it. It's, those, those kind of the. Yeah, those. and we promote it. It's, those, those, kind of the silo, yeah, those...
They're trying to keep it up as well as we can, and we do have the job posted and we intend to fill it, so.
And one of the things I think is important in these roles is to break, and here's an, I hate, sorry, it's corporate speak, but I deal a lot in my day job, is you break down the silos. If, has anyone heard, you probably have heard that. You've definitely heard that. You break down the silos of just, just because it, it's, it might be a different agency or a different groups, if, the, the public's not gonna see a difference. So, it's, even if the Water Works isn't technically our job about the boiler alert, boil alert, we need to have a process in place to, to own that message, too, because it, it is our job to get that kind of stuff out because it affects our people. And it's, can't just be, "Well, that's not my job, I'm, I'm the bureaucrat in this role and the other things aren't my job." We, we have to have a more customer-service focused, think about the people.
Not psychic. First, I've heard of it right now.
That, that clear, clearly indicates we need a better protocol with the, again, it's, it's how do we fix this so that going forward, it's better?
The Water Works contacts those people affected, so, you know.
It's not a citywide deal.
Well, there's one post that appears very official. It'd be nice to at least bat that down because it makes it sound like it'd be a good idea to boil the whole city.
Typically, what they do is when they have a water main break, they seal the break
and then they wait an extended period of time and test the water to make sure that when they had the break, nothing leached into the water. But then the Water Works, as Greg says, is the one that really notifies people, so.
Yeah, there's, like, here's the thing, it just says, "As a precautionary measure, the council's Water Works is recommended boil water during, before drinking." I mean, it goes on to talk about, it does not say only a certain area, so, you know, I don't know who all they sent this to, unfortunately.
Yes, first...
But, you know, it didn't go to you guys, which would've been nice because you probably would've sent it out. So, maybe we just need to talk to Doug and, like, make sure he somehow lives...
Find a process to own, own this. Because let's say it's inaccurate, and it may very well be. If you don't know about it, like, I'd like to think it's inaccurate and I just coincidentally...
My guess is it's probably accurate because it's a normal operating procedure when there's a water main break.